All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the city council to order. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the role to establish a quorum?
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Leloi?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shenear?
I'm here.
Councilmember Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
We can see them.
Councilmember Jennings is visually here. Councilmember Vang?
Present.
Mayor Steinberg is expected momentarily.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's go ahead and do the pledge. Mr. Gera, as the newest father and parent here, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, I'll do it quietly, get this guy sleeping here.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember, appreciate that. We have one item on the agenda tonight, which is to hear from our young people. So I assume Mrs. Wimberly is leading us off?
Yes, I am.
Great, and Chris, you could also, we have a number of new council members, as you know, I don't know if you have a little bit of history on the program, I think that would be worthwhile.
Sure. Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Wimberly. I am the Recreation Superintendent within the Department of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment. I am housed in the youth division, and I have the pleasure of working with the Summer at City Hall program since its inception. And we right now are in, this is our 11th graduating class, so I am so excited to bring this team to you guys tonight. This program was a brainchild 11 years ago of Councilmember Shenear and his wife, Bina Lithkowitz. And we, there was a goal of having young people part of the conversation and learning more about local government, and how they as young people can be engaged in those processes. We started working with Sex City Unified, and this program began, we had the one class, and I believe we started with 25 students. I can't remember if it was 25 or 30.
30 students.
30 students. And at that time, we were only in Sex City Unified. And we had a credential teacher that came along and was hired to teach these young people about local government, and really have a different discussion to where small group activities, conversations, and learning more about how the city functions. And fast forward 11 years, we now have three credential teachers. If we were not doing this virtually, we would have 90 students graduating from this program that represent students from Twin Rivers Unified, Sex City Unified, and Natomas Unified School District, along with at-large candidates that are young people that live within the Sacramento city limits and may not attend one of those three school districts. These students, at the conclusion of this program, receive a, we've increased our dollar amount, a $350 stipend, along with five elective credits from their respective school district. Then, if they're an at-large candidate, we actually provide them a completion of community service hours, so all of their instructional time is counted towards community service hours instead of the elective credits. So this has been a wonderful experience. This is our second year being virtual. We were hoping not to be coming back and still being called the Virtual, Summer at Virtual City Hall. And we thought last year, saying limited edition, meant that we would be coming to you guys, you know, face-to-face, back in council chambers. But as, you know, the saying, you know, you make lemonade from those lemons, that's really what we have been doing last night. If you guys were down at City Hall, you may have heard some loud noise because we had our second annual drive-through graduation out on the H Street side of City Hall, where the students came through, they received their certificates of completion of graduation, along with their polo shirt, their snazzy polo shirt that you will see them wearing tonight, and a lawn sign. It was exciting to see them pulling in, parents, family members cheering and hooping it up. And it was great to be able to have an opportunity to see more than just the shoulders on up to the top of their heads. So that's kind of a view of the Summer at City Hall program. Tonight, we are here to present a part, a component of our program, the curriculum of our Project City Hall project. In your staff reports for tonight, we have six teams that will be presenting. Each team has selected a team name, and we will have our returning youth and those students being part of our choreographed and orchestrated six group presentations tonight. How was that summary, Vice Mayor Shenear?
No, that was great, appreciate it. And if people have any questions, I think it is important to note that this is a partnership between the city and the school districts, where they're supplying the credential teachers, and we do the other pieces of this. So it's always my favorite council meeting of the year, so we'll see how it goes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, guys. And without further ado, I would like to introduce the most recent addition to the civic engagement unit. And I will say, Rhonda Patterson has been with the city for, I believe, approximately 11 to 12 years. She was working within our expanded learning operations, but recently was promoted to the program supervisor. And the interesting part is, Rhonda, the day her promotion went into effect, was the first day in which we had our student and parent orientation. And so she has been learning about Summer at City Hall on a daily basis. So I would like to introduce our newest addition, Rhonda Patterson.
Thank you, Ms. Chris, thank you for that introduction. And hello, council members and participants, I am so excited to be here tonight. As she said, I am Rhonda Patterson, and I'm the new program supervisor for civic engagement. I've had a wonderful experience these five weeks with these young people, just seeing the perseverance that they have and their dedication, and being here in this virtual world and showing up every day, ready to perform, it's just been amazing. And I feel very honored to be here, so thank you again, Chris. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I have been with the city since 2009. I worked in various youth development programs. My tenure in the field, about 30 years, I've been a youth practitioner and advocate for youth. Worked in the Bay Area for about 10 years, and spent about seven years in Texas, and then I'm back here in Sacramento. And so it's just been a journey, but it's been an amazing job, or in career, to work with young people and to see them expand their knowledge. And this new venture into local government with young people and being civically engaged has just been a dream of mine. So I feel like this position is a culmination of all of the things that I've done over my career. And with that being said, I would just like to take an opportunity to thank some folks who have really stepped up and made this virtual program what it is, and of awesome success. Of course, first, our city team for doing the amazing work, being dedicated, being here, being committed to the success of the program. Our teaching staff, we have some veteran staff, Kim Bump and Michael Washington. And then we also have our first-year staffer, Jamie Weatherson, uh, Weatherson, excuse me, who came aboard sort of like at the same time I did, and we kind of weathered that storm together. And so it's been really great just to have them to be here to support myself and the liaisons and the program, and the participants helping to keep them on track. Our district partners, of course, Andrea Novo from Sex City Unified, Robert Roach from Twin Rivers Unified, and Lizette Mihah from Natomas Unified. Amazing to meet with them virtually and do those partner meetings, and really make sure that we were providing the services that our young people needed. Our program has some amazing liaisons, there were three liaisons who really did the wellness portion of the program and made sure socially and emotionally our young people were okay. And we had our Spirit Speaker Series and Career Journey presenters. I believe there were probably more than 20 of them that came and just presented, and really allowed the young people to ask questions and find out who they were and what their journey had been. Special thanks to our charter offices. Of course, Mario Lara, our department director, Monica Blanco, our youth division manager, that came out and participated with us yesterday and helped us pass out signs and certificates, and that was really fun. And of course, Chris Wimberly, for her outstanding leadership, she brought me aboard, and she has really, really been holding my hand, so I want to just publicly thank her for that. And last but not least, is our community partner, 7-Eleven. They came through and really brought some really amazing things for the young people to have as takeaways during the graduation. So with that being said, I would just take the pleasure right now to introduce our first presenters, if I can. And that would be the Tired Swaggish Zoomers, TSC.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Chan, and I reside in District One, and I'm currently attending Intercom High School.
Oh, my name is Tiffany Pham, and I reside in District One, and I'm also attending Intercom High School.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Huang, I reside in District One and attend Miraloma High School.
Hello, my name is Susan Tao, I reside in District Eight and attend Alito Bourbon High School.
It seems we have a group member missing or not here. Her name is Alarifan Dubri. She resides in District One and attends Natomas High School. Good afternoon, city councils, city clerks, city manager, and Mayor Steinberg. Thank you all for coming to listen to our presentation. We are the Tired Swaggish Zoomers, or TSC for short. And over the course of these five weeks, we developed our project on mental health awareness and outreach. Mental health is a widespread issue, as roughly one in every five adult and one in every six children will experience a mental health condition. Of those with mental health issues, two-thirds will never seek professional help due to lack of awareness. We suggest implementing a mental health campaign, which would feature speakers and organizations that specialize in mental health and wellness. This would contribute to the efforts of decreasing stigma around mental health and spreading resources. We will now show our PSA, which would further explain our project.
What is mental health? Mental health is an issue that can affect almost everyone, regardless of their age, gender, identity, and race. According to NAMI, a nonprofit organization that focuses on helping individuals with mental health conditions, found that 66% of adults develop serious mental illnesses, and 51% of youth between the ages of six and 17 are affected by a mental health condition. These mental health conditions vary from something as common as clinical depression to something as rare as the Alice in Wonderland syndrome. These mental health conditions play a large role in an individual's social, emotional, and psychological well-being. This is something that should be deemed important as it is present in youth and through adulthood. With an increased awareness to mental health and its resources, more individuals would be able to receive the support they need.
There are many alternative policies to deal with mental health, such as developing mental health services into more general hospitals, getting mental health services into a more primary healthcare, having a community built just for mental health, or something as simple as promoting self-care. The month of May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and a mental health campaign event would be very beneficial to the community. The campaign would aim to help youths with mental health issues find the resources they need, like NAMI Sacramento Support Groups, which allow youths to talk to others who have experienced the same mental health issue before. The event would create a safe place for youths with mental health issues by encouraging peer support, as well as by teaching youths and the community about the signs of a mental health condition in a family member or friend. A mental health campaign event during Mental Health Awareness Month, or Green Ribbon Month, would decrease the stigma around mental health issues and bring awareness to the many resources available in our community.
Green Ribbon Month could be very beneficial to the youth of this county. Ribbon events often spread resources and information, which allow the public to stay informed and know what's available to them, whether they need to help others or themselves. To make a Green Ribbon Month a reality, there can be a group in place to collaborate with the city council and plan out events and campaigns towards mental health. In schools, there could be a club dedicated to mental health, which can also plan out events for their school. Altogether, this can keep the youth informed on how to keep up their mental health, so they could stay healthy with both body and mind, as a healthy mind equals a healthy body.
Now, I'd like to pass the mic on to Susan Tao to explain our billboard.
Hello again, my name is Susan Tao, and today I'll be talking about our billboard. For our billboard, we focus on creating an accurate representation of mental health. Our slogan, healthy mind, equal healthy body, is a meaningful depiction that can easily be interpreted because with a healthy mind and a healthy mindset, naturally your body gets better and healthier, leading to overall improved wellness. For our graphics, we selected a heart and a brain to implicate the mind and the body. Since we are trying to promote Green Ribbon Month by spreading awareness of mental health, we use a green ribbon as the connecting line between the two. Now, I'd like to pass the mic off to Alarifan.
Alarifan is here, team, but she appears to be experiencing some audio difficulties. So if one of the team members can fill in on her information, please.
As we mentioned in our PSA, mental health conditions are something that can affect everyone. Through an interview with the youth programs manager of NAMI, she mentioned that 75% of youth and young adults develop symptoms of a lifelong mental health condition before the age of 24. Youth mental health is an issue that must be addressed, and it's imperative that they know where to find help. We found that out of 47 youths surveyed, a third weren't aware of the mental health resources available in Sacramento. And when asked if students would use resources from school for mental health, the majority replied with no. Spreading awareness on mental health will provide an environment where individuals feel like they are understood and supported, therefore decreasing stigma and misunderstanding. My name is Kaylee Huang. The stigma around mental health leads many youths to not find the resources they need, or even get a proper diagnosis of a mental health issue. That is why we decided on a mental health campaign event during Mental Health Awareness Month, otherwise known as Green Ribbon Month. By encouraging peer support and educating individuals about what mental health conditions really are, this campaign event would help youths feel more comfortable discussing mental health with others, and decrease the shame and misunderstanding around mental health. The source, Youth Links, StopStigmaSacramento.org, and NAMI Sacramento are all great resources in the community that need more awareness so that youths are able to take advantage of their support. Now, please turn your attention to Jennifer.
Thank you, Kaylee. My name is Jennifer Chan, and I would like to share a story that was told to us during an interview with NAMI. I'm sure you've all seen or heard information about anxiety or depression. Maybe you've heard someone say, "I have really bad anxiety," or "I'm having a panic attack." The fact is, someone who's actually had a panic attack will know the difference between thoughtless words and the actual experience. In this situation, you are talking about how you're worried or stressed, but it's not what it's interpreted as, and it's not what a panic attack is, which is terrifying, overwhelming, out of your control. It's different. Although we don't want to discredit their stresses, it's crucial that we spread awareness on mental health conditions, and individuals are educated on terms regarding mental health to better support those who are living with the difficulties. As a community, we should strive to creating an open and accepting environment for everyone, to feel supported and comfortable enough to reach out for help. In conclusion, we hope that our group was able to stress the importance of bringing awareness to mental health and its resources, and encourage action to be done. We believe that spreading awareness through citywide events and campaigns by promoting Green Ribbon Month would be taking the first step in the right direction. Only through awareness will people start to understand the importance of acknowledging the consequential effects of mental health conditions and encourage receiving support. Please remember that a healthy mind leads to a healthy body. Thank you. And that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from the council? My Vang, go ahead.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I am going to comment on every presentation, because I think it's really important to make sure we center and uplift our young people. Jennifer, Tiffany, Kaylee, Susan, and Alarifan want to say a great job, even though we weren't able to hear Alarifan. I just want to say, you know, you should be so proud of yourself, of the presentation and the materials that you presented on behalf of council. I thought it was super informative and insightful, and some of the work is underway, but I think centering your voices is so important. My commitment to you for this presentation, I think it's really, a really great direction. And so my commitment, I'm writing a commitment for each one, is that when May comes, you know, I, I know my office will be pushing out hard, the green ribbon, and making sure that we do our winners in our district. But I just want to take this opportunity to say just thank you for your, your heart and your hustle, and I'm just really proud of all of you.
Pro Tem?
I just know that that was a loaded group of District One strong voices with a touch of District Eight in the mix, and I wanted to tell you all that I'm very proud of you. Excellent work, you picked a great topic, it's the mayor's favorite topic, so good for you. And I really enjoyed your presentation, well thought out, good job.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yeah, I just want to join my colleagues in letting you know what a great job you did. And when someone couldn't get their mic working, how quick you were to, for another teammate, I think it was Kaylee, who picked up that part, and it was seamless. I mean, it was just like, it's like you had practiced that part yourself the whole time. So great job on all your strategies, great job on working together as a team, the information was incredible, your energy was relentless. You really believed in the subject matter, and we felt it every single step of the way. Great job, I'm real proud of you.
Hey, Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hey, you guys, I, I'd like to say you did a great job with your public service announcement. It was engaging, and it was artistic, and informative, and very watchable. So I, I really enjoyed that piece of your presentation, and congratulations.
Councilmember Gera?
Thank you again. Yeah, I was going to say, I really love the public service announcement and the fact that, that you're normalizing the conversation about, you know, mental health and how we can all work together. So great job, everybody.
Great. Former Councilmember Steinberg?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I got on a little bit late, so I just caught end of it, but I was really impressed. And I just, I just want to reflect for you, who made the presentation. 10 years ago, very few groups would make a presentation on mental health, because it was a topic that people, especially young people, were kind of afraid to talk about. And now the fact that, whoever just used the word, maybe it was Councilmember Harris, I don't remember, that you're normalizing this conversation makes it so much easier for your peers, and anyone listening to this to, to talk about their own struggles, because we all have them, we all have struggles. And I just am so grateful, and you know, my, my only request of you is that you be lifelong mental health advocates, that you go to the legislature, that you go to governmental bodies everywhere, and that you insist on more funding, on policy change, on all the things that are going to be essential to fix what is still, in too many instances, a broken system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add, great job, appreciate it. I think everything was crisp, it was clear, you got your message across. I, I will say, and I don't know how many of you are seniors or juniors or sophomores, the county, in conjunction with the city and the County Office of Education, is just starting a youth mental health board. So there will be young people from around the county who will be serving on that, so that they can then advise the county board of supervisors, the city council, and the board at the, the school district about what is needed. So that might be something to look into, and feel free to call my office, and we can give you the contacts on that. But great job, really appreciate it, really important issue. We now see it on TV every single day, so good thing to get there. All right, Ms. Wimberly, you want to go to number two?
Sure. It, it's actually Rhonda, and, but before we move on, I just want to advise that within your staff reports, some of these billboards may have been updated since we submitted, had to do the, you know, submitting early on the staff report, so they may not coincide, but you are getting, you guys are getting the newest and freshest billboards within these presentations. So our next presenters are the Castaways.
Hi, I'm Flora Molina, I attend West Campus High School, and I reside in District Six.
Hello, my name is Giovanni Di Arcangelo, I attend NP3 Charter High School, and I also reside in District Six.
Hi, my name is Liliana Cruz, I attend Hiram Johnson and reside in District Six.
Hi, my name is Melon Bisrat, I attend Intercom High School, and I reside in District One.
Hi, my name is Mohamed Raz, I attend Sheldon High School and reside in District Eight.
Hi, I'm Simran Gill, I attend Intercom High School and reside in District One.
Hello, my name is Terry O, I attend John F. Kennedy High School, and I reside in District One.
Hi, I'm Melon Tiohannes, I attend Intercom High School and I reside in District One. Another team member, Maani Bowens, who could not make it today, attend GW Carver High School, resides in District Five.
Good afternoon, city council members, city clerk Capi, city manager Chan, and Mayor Steinberg. I would like to start by thanking you all for making the effort to be here today. Once again, my name is Mohamed Raz, and I am part of Team Castaways. We are Castaways, and today we will be discussing youth input within the upcoming 2040 Parks Master Plan.
City of Sacramento is currently working on the 2040 Parks Master Plan, which will impact all parks in the city. And as such, gaining thoughts from different demographics and communities is crucial. Youth perspective specifically is one that is valued as equally as adult opinions, but much more difficult to obtain, according to Mario Lara, Director of the Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment Department. This is why we would like to begin our presentation with our PSA and proposed billboard.
Hey, what's up?
Hi, can we hang out today?
Sure, where did you want to go?
Hmm, what about the park across the street?
Hmm. Are you sure about that park?
Yeah, you're right. What about the park around the corner?
Hmm, that one isn't good either.
Ah, our parks are always dirty, not accessible, not updated, not safe, and just not fun to go to.
Right, I feel like our parks are so outdated. I wish we could voice our input.
Yeah, let me see if there's a place where we can do that. Oh, look!
If you are a teen or young adult in Sacramento, we'd love to hear from you. The city is currently working on a plan to set the foundation for future parks and update our current parks. Updating our parks can benefit you, your friends, and your family. Parks are essential for many reasons besides just having fun. They improve the environment, make our air cleaner, improve public health, and even help out the economy.
There are many issues that need our attention, like lack of maintenance, outdated amenities, or even parks that just aren't engaging. In a survey, over 52% of youths said that our parks need major improvements within the next few years, and an additional 40% agreed and said they might be needed soon.
This is why we need your help. In order to fix our parks and keep the benefits they bring, we want youth input.
While some have suggested that we utilize surveys and other indirect methods of contact, we want to get a little more personal with the youth in Sacramento. This is why we will be hosting public meetings to hear directly from you, both online and in person for your convenience.
At these meetings, we want to hear what your thoughts are, like what issues you want fixed, as well as what you'd like to see in future parks.
Additionally, to ensure we continue to hear youth voices, we will be
Additionally, to ensure we continue to hear youth voices, we will be introducing a long-term youth committee that will work with the youth, parks and community enrichment department.
With this, we will be able to successfully gain youth perspective on the 2040 Parks Master Plan. Because when it comes to Sacramento parks, the change starts with youth.
Wow, that was exactly what we were looking for. Now our parks can improve to benefit us all.
Yeah, we should definitely join because change starts with us.
By distributing our PSA video and showcasing our billboard, we can raise public awareness about this issue at hand. Allowing more youth to be aware of this topic and contribute to the solution. The Sacramento Parks Master Plan needs updates that require community and especially youth input to ensure that a variety of perspectives are heard.
More needs to be done to combat the issues we see in our parks in the next master plan. In a survey conducted with the youth of Sacramento, around fifty percent of participants. Believe that Sacramento parks are underdeveloped and need major updates to their structures in the next few years. The 2040 Parks Master Plan needs to get proper input from youth so that direct change can happen in the near future and these issues can become resolved.
While surveys and other indirect methods of reaching out to youth have worked to identify nonspecific and general data. Our idea of creating public meetings open to, open to the community, targeting youth especially. Gives young people the opportunity to share their opinions on this master plan.
These meetings allow youth to engage in direct dialogue with the city, which is the easiest way to directly gain youth perspective. By offering incentives like community service hours and raffles, we believe we can engage even more youth, which again makes this. One of the best. If, if. The best way to produce at hand.
In an interview that we conducted with District Eight Councilmember My Fang. It was established that there needs to be youth staff working amongst city staff with this issue. Especially since, especially when it comes to outreach, since the majority of youth use Instagram, TikTok and other social media. Which can be utilized to advertise this plan as well.
For this reason, we want to introduce a youth committee that can focus on the Parks Master Plan while working closely with the youth, parks and community enrichment department. This will allow the city to gain continuous input from the youth, once again ensuring that the youth perspective is fully understood.
For our policy, we need support. Every good plan or policy has resources contributing to it, making it actually able to work. We need a platform. In order to truly connect with the youth, we propose that both in-person and online meetings are, are held. It's going to make people more comfortable. So, well seventy-three, both statistics show that we already have.
In addition to the support that we already have, we also need manpower and resources from the city. As well as the help of council members who can speak to their communities and spread the opportunities presented. Our meetings can also gain more awareness and youth can contribute this way.
By supporting and helping develop the policies we have mentioned today, the city of Sacramento will be able to continue with the master plan update, knowing that our youth has successfully given their input. Allowing our city parks to thrive for years to come. Thank you for listening to our presentation and now we will take any follow-up questions or comments.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I'm mute.
Sorry, old person and technology. Mr. Gera, you want to try?
No, thank you. I, first I wanted to thank all of my constituents there from District Six. Great to see everyone. And, and also, you know, I wanted to just commend you on how you took something that can be very, sometimes. Dry, boring and mundane is talking about a master plan or a facilities plan and deferred maintenance. And bringing it exciting with, and engaging with your presentation there. And the tagline and just the logos that you guys did with, you know, change in parks begin with you. Or youth, you know, that was a great play on words. I mean, you could probably use that for a, a lot of the initiatives you're doing. So I just wanted to say thank you for, for that engagement. And, and for bringing up the point that in some of our communities, our parks are older and outdated and recognizing that parks have to evolve with. With the youth, you know, and, and as things change, there are things that, that our. Youth want to see in parks and figuring out how to make sure that we're connected. So congratulations on that effort.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to also take this opportunity to say great job to Flora, Giovanni, Liliana, Melon, Mohammed, Simon and Terry. Thank you so much. I think that was a great presentation. I also really appreciate y'all reaching out to our office. I had a really great conversation with all of you and I thought it was a. Super awesome presentation. One question that I did have, and I think it'd be really cool for my colleagues to know, why did y'all call yourself the Castaways? Anyone can take that.
It was random. Basically, uh, what we did is we had the previous groups decide like a theme. And it was like a ocean people thi- theme. So we were, we decided on Castaways. Just as a group because we thought it, it sounded nice and we're like youth, I guess. So I guess Castaways just kind of worked well. Cause like. I don't know. I guess we were all on our own, you know, we didn't have adults to give us a lot of help.
That's awes- that's awesome. Well, I also, I, I only asked that because I think I asked that question for Mohammed. For the team last time. And I think one thing you also shared in addition to that Giovanni was that. I think Mohammed, you had shared in our interview that the reason why you also called yourself Castaway was because you felt like as Castaway, you have to be resourceful. As well. And so I think y'all did a great job and was incredibly resourceful with the time that you had. I think it was a great survey as well that, that you also put out. So just wanted to say congratulations to all of you. I'm really proud of you.
Okay, Pro Tem Aspie.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenir. I just wanted to tell the group that, well, you didn't need any. Grownups help. You did fine on your own. And this is a really important topic to get involved in because. You know, actually, we've done some of this out in District One. Two summer at city hall interns. About five years ago, worked on the aquatics facility in North Natomas and they put their input in and I can tell you, you'll see when it opens. Uh, next month, some of the input from those teens. One was where could food trucks pull up so that we could have food trucks at events? And another was making sure that there was like snack bars and places to get food when you're at the site. They had some pretty strong opinions about making sure that it was close proximity to the school. So that walking over from the campus didn't take a long time if you were doing PE or after school sports and stuff. So there has been some, I think, good decisions made. In District One, we also had youth plan a skate park. If you've been up here, it's the one in Wild Rose that was completely designed by youth. And I think those projects are all better for the input. So this is a good topic and one for you to continue building on. Great job.
Okay, Councilmember Lowey.
Thank you very much. What a great job and. You, you guys hit every, every point regarding our parks. You are absolutely right. Our parks are extremely outdated and. I think you did such a great job solely because you didn't have that many adults around you. That's why it turned out so perfect. Cause sometimes as adults, we think, oh, we know it all. But in reality, we don't. And you guys, your generation, your age, regarding some of these topics. You know, so much more than what we know. The only thing that I would add to that presentation regarding the parks and upgrading is the safety aspects too. That our parks have to be safe as well. But a wonderful job. I love the name Castaway. Look it up and see if you see Wilson next foot and then there is a movie behind it. Which, which kind of brings everything together. So thank you so much for the presentation. Great job. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Harris.
You're muted, Council. Thank you for that. So I think you did a great job with your presentation and advocating for youth voice. To improve our park system is really a great theme. But I got to tell you, and be a little tough on you here. I am a former Parks Commissioner. And I happen to think that our park system is pretty awesome overall. Yeah, we have a lot of outdated parks. We have some issues in parks. But when you look at our park system and especially compared to many park systems throughout the country, it's pretty amazing. And, and I think that actually if you had a little bit more positive message in there rather than leading with that our parks are dirty and. You know, need upgrading. I, I think it might've been a little bit more powerful message. You know, we strive always to improve our parks and with the money that we have at hand, we do a pretty good job. So that's my criticism, that I think you maybe could have pulled in more people with a little bit more positive message. Nonetheless. You delivered your message very well and it's a great message to carry forward. So good job.
Great, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, thank you for that awesome presentation. You're just reminding me why I'm so glad we started adding youth seats onto so many of our boards and commissions. And how important like the partnership and all the focused work you all gave. And I just want to commend you. It's so interesting that you brought this up. Cause I actually heard from some adults that they were like, gosh, I feel like we missed some opportunities on some of this Parks Master Plan outreach because it was a pandemic and. We had all this youth and here you come with this really fantastic idea and message to try to get young people engaged. So I just think you're really tapped into what the community thinks in a scene. And I just want to appreciate all the wisdom you brought into this presentation and look forward to seeing what you all do next. And hopefully you're in continued engagement in this next year after you're done to make sure this plan is awesome when it's all done. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Jennings.
Yeah, I just want to build on what my colleagues are saying. You really did a great job with the whole presentation. I love the, the PowerPoint that you did and the, the graphics that you used in, in getting your points across. Change does start with you and we need to hear the voice of the youth. Too many times we have adults making decisions. Without the, without hearing from our youth. And we do need to hear from you on not only this particular subject matter, but others as well. But I'm glad to hear from you on this particular subject matter. And I'm glad to hear the youth voice and glad to hear that it, change will start with you and that you're contributing to our. Two thousand and forty master plan, Parks Master Plan. So great job. I'm really proud of each and every one of you for the work you've done. And, and how you've informed us about what we need to do in order to affect the change that you want to see.
Great. Thank you. I just want to add, great job. You know, our parks have probably been used more since COVID started than. Anytime in our history, there have been so many people out because it was the one place that you could go. So I think your timing is great on this and really appreciate how you integrated your message with what the city needs. So there's a direct connection there. That we can utilize what you've done. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Patterson, group number three.
And next up, we have Mango Skittles.
Can you guys hear me?
Now we can.
My name is Anisha Singh. I'm a, I'm a resident of District Eight and I'm a student at John F. Kennedy.
Hello, good evening. My name is Brandon Paluffo. I reside in District One and I attend Endercombe High School.
Hello, my name is Rosa Med. I live in District One and go to NP three High School.
Hello, my name is Kylie Huang. I reside in District One and I attend Miraloma High School.
Hello, my name is Rubina Ramsey. I reside in District One and I attend Endercombe High School.
Hello, my name is Steven Maro. I'm a resident District Five and I'm a student at Hiram Johnson High School.
Hello, my name is Tiffany He. I reside in District Eight and attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Hello, my name is Austin Rafman. I'm a resident of District One and I'm a student at NP three High School.
Good evening, city council, city clerk, city manager Chan and mayor Steinberg. Thank you so much for listening to us today. Once again, my name is Kylie Huang. I reside in District One and I attend Miraloma High School. We are the Mango Skittles and our topic focused on bringing awareness to climate change. This included plans already set by the city as well as what residents can do to make an impact on the environment. Our slogan, Make a Change for Climate Change, reflects these ideas and unites individuals behind a common thread. From biking to recycling, there are so many opportunities to make a change, no matter how small. The consequences of climate change can be seen every day in our community. From rising temperatures to abnormal weather patterns. As youth of the city, we encourage you all to support our goal. And encourage more young people to speak out for what they believe in. We'll now be presenting our PSA.
Climate change is a change in normal conditions for a period of time caused primarily by excess amounts of carbon dioxide. When fossil fuels are used, it adds large amounts of greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, causing many natural disasters as they worsen over time.
Our slogan was meant to show awareness to people that they have to take care about the earth and making changes in their daily lives.
Climate change has most definitely become a more and more prominent issue. We can see the effects today. From rising temperatures to the quality of the air we breathe.
What has the city done to combat climate change?
The city invests in and maintains an active transportation network of bike lanes, sidewalks. Sorry, off-street pathways and more. We also ordered an electric dump truck and there's a lot of other things we do.
Which program would you say was the most successful? Why?
The city has already exceeded our twenty twenty greenhouse gas reduction goals. Actually. We've achieved a nineteen percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from two thousand and five.
Jennifer was talking about reducing vehicle miles traveled and not having. Driving be the choice for every single little trip to the store or the library, whatever. There are a lot of benefits from walking or biking somewhere. Health benefits, just kind of the. Mental health benefits as well of getting some extra physical activity. Or, you know, for the building, buildings using electricity instead of natural gas that Jennifer was describing, that can improve indoor air quality.
What would you recommend youths to do if they are interested in helping but don't know how to?
Engagement with your community. You know, tell your teachers, use those messages, I mean, those forums available to you, whether that's. Engaging through your student council or it's the type of school projects you do. Also tell us your ideas on how we can do better and reflect.
What can an individual do to improve the situation of climate change?
Be important to do what you're doing and have that, that support, that community of people who care.
So with all that being said, why are we here today? Our unlimited goal is to spread awareness of the impact of climate change and what everyone can do to help.
We can all make a change, one step at a time, together. And as always, make change for climate change.
Well, and I'll be presenting our billboard.
Hello, my name is Austin Rafman and I was part of the group that worked on the creation of this billboard in order to raise awareness for climate change. And we'll be describing the billboard with further details. The billboard could possibly be near a highway or road for drivers to see when they're driving. It has a picture of a person picking up some waste at a park, which will show to the viewers of this billboard that minimizing waste is necessary for making a change for climate change. It's meant to instill climate change awareness in them. The billboard overall is simple, making it easy to understand and remember. We believe that putting up this billboard in Sacramento could bring more attention to our citizens about climate change. I'll now pass the mic over to Tiffany.
Hello, once again, my name is Tiffany. I reside in District Eight and attend John F. Kennedy High School. And a survey dealt with conduct among our field summer at city hall student and peers. We found that out of sixty participants, ninety-five percent acknowledged that our daily activity.
We found that out of sixty participants, ninety-five percent acknowledged that our daily activities such as driving, using electricity, natural gas, and plastic are increasing the city's total carbon emission. But out of the same sixty participants, only twenty-three point three percent are aware of the city's action plan to prevent climate change. Although this survey cannot represent the whole population of Sacramento, it does shed light on the lack of awareness about actions to address climate change. It is important to acknowledge the impacts of climate change and engage in the city's action plan. As it aims to increase behaviors such as less driving, more biking, using public transportation, reducing the use of plastic and more to create a healthier environment in the future. I will now pass the mic over to Fraze.
Hello, once again, my name is Fraze Med. I reside in District One and go to NP3 High. Evaluation of climate change is detrimental to the environment and our health. Combating it is imperative to build a healthy, livable environment for all of us, but it's never so simple. Making the actions among everyone is so crucial to the achievement of this goal. When we all make a change for climate change, the action of one is small, but while the impact is huge. We will love and appreciate your support if you could show our PSA and billboard to all the residents of Sacramento. Thank you for listening to us, and that will conclude our presentation. Are there any questions?
Great, thank you. And just something very quick as as people raise their hands here. Uh, you may hear returning youth as a phrase. Uh, one of the the trademarks of this program is that we bring young people back from the prior year or prior years to help plan and facilitate uh, each year's program, so that uh, we're we're trying to walk the talk here about engaging young people and having them lead. So Councilmember Vang and then Councilmember Valenzuela.
I think Councilmember Valenzuela actually beat me to the button first. So, do you want to go first, Councilwoman?
Sure, sure. Uh, thank you. I just wanted to start by saying I like every group's name, but for some reason, Mango Skittles makes me smile every single time I read it or hear it. So I just wanted to thank you all for picking a name of your group that makes me smile every time I hear it. Um, but I also want to really thank you for raising awareness about climate change. And I think your your message was really spot on because so much of climate change and fighting this, um, I mean, there's big policies and things that we need to do as government officials, the state government, federal governments need to do. But there's also all this individual choice involved and like, um, to piggyback off of your recycling image, when the circular economy, right? Like, how do you stop throwing things away or even recycling things but reusing things? And that takes a choice to say, I'm going to go to a store that lets me refill my soap dispenser rather than just recycle and throw away this thing and bring something else and buy something else again. And so I think you're starting a really important conversation among your peers and among our community that I'm excited about. And would just love to hear your ideas, um, and obviously not today, but other things we could be doing as a local government to make it easier, not just for young people, but for everybody to make those choices. Um, like Vice Mayor Chenier has been a champion of the free youth bus passes. And I think like that sort of thing is really important to building habits. But what else could we do um, to make it easier uh, for young people and just for the community at large to to make those good choices? So, um, thank you for doing this, and I think you just hit the nail on the head with the message. I want to commend you for that. Thank you.
Great. All right, Councilmember Vang.
Awesome. Just wanted to also say, great job to Team Mango Skittles. Just wanted to say that on record. It's a pretty awesome uh, team name. Um, Alicia, Brandon, Kylie, Franz, uh, Rubina, Steve, uh, Steve and Tiffany, great job. Um, you know, I echo Councilwoman Valenzuela that, you know, climate change is probably one of the most important issue of our time. Um, right? It's a threat to everyone's physical health, mental health, your air, your water, food, shelter. Um, and we know that it has disproportionate rates, especially among our most vulnerable communities. I think one thing I want to uplift that uh, came from your survey as I was looking at your 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 packet is that of the folks you surveyed, about seventy-six percent of young people wasn't aware of our city action plan, right? Um, and I think that speaks volume, which means that we have a lot of work to do as a city to make sure that young people um, is aware of this action plan and that they're informed by it. Um, that they inform us um, in terms of the work that we're doing moving forward. Um, you know, I I know that as electeds, uh, we make decisions every day that we may not know that may have unintended consequences for for society now and maybe even for future generations. So having youth voice, because at the end of the day, the decision we make will impact you, right, and future generations to come. Um, and so I think this is a an awesome topic, thought y'all uh, did a great job and I'm just just really, just really, really proud. So it's a great job, great job to to Team Mango Skittles.
Okay, Pro Tem Aspie.
Thanks, Councilmember. First of all, I have questions. So I have this Skittles box. And mango is not one of the normal flavors. So did you guys name yourself after like the tropical Skittles? Yeah, okay, I get it. Um, first of all, uh, Fraze, I don't know if you saw him, but Tyus tried to poke his head in while you were talking. Many of these students go to the same school as my son, NP3, so he he was in the background listening. He said you did a great job. So there's that. And then Kylie, I have a question for you. Are you on there?
Yes, I am.
Kylie, do what do you have a career goal already set for yourself?
Um, not something totally set in stone, but I am very interested in learning more about the local government and what it's can do.
Good. I was so hoping you would say that because I I would really like to encourage you to consider a leadership role in in politics. You, uh, I could have listened to you all day, your, the sound of your voice and the way your smile comes out while you're talking. You did a great job and you really did a really good job of opening this up for your group. So all of that, you ha- you helped all of them uh, really make their points nice and strong by grabbing our attention on the front end. And if you, I know you live in District One, if you would like to come see me, I would be more than happy to sit down and meet with you and talk to you a little bit about how you might be able to get a little bit more involved with our office. Great job to all of you. And Fraze, Tyus says hi.
Mayor Stein, Mayor Steinberg.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I I love the saying, I I think it is just really smart and very, very catchy. Um, an excellent presentation. The one thing that I I I would just want to advise, you know, in a, I hope in a very constructive way, is that when it comes to the messaging here, and this is for really all the groups. I do think you want to think about being a little bit more specific about what you want young people to do. What is it? Because eh, the the message, the cause is so important, the message is so catchy. But then you want to take what you've done to bring the young people in, and I think give them a little bit more specifics about what you want them to do. Councilmember Valenzuela mentioned the Free RT bus pass that Councilmember Chenier championed. And so that's one example of where either through the billboard or to the PSA, you could provide a phone number or the website um, so that some, a young person who maybe has not, doesn't know of that opportunity or hasn't access to can easily then take that next step. Because the generalized message, and this is for all the groups I've heard so far, are really, really good. But then I would just say, take the next step and give your audience one or two lead examples uh, a- and some real direction about what they can do to actually make the change that you are promoting. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris. You're muted again, Jeff.
Thanks. Like you said, old guys in technology, right?
Yeah.
So uh, the thing is, make a change for climate change. So what's that mean? That means that people have to change their behaviors if they want to change the way uh, the world is going. And it's your world to inherit. So this is an extremely important message. Now, does that mean that youth have to change their behavior or does that mean that older people have to change their behavior? You know, frankly, it means that more of the older crowd has to figure this out. You know, we we kind of got us into this conundrum that wasn't your doing. But your message message to your peers is, I think, let's build a lifestyle that is sustainable so that we can work with the earth and nurture it and maintain it moving forward. But a lot of your message, Make a Change for Climate Change, is actually aimed at people older than yourselves. Nonetheless, this is this is your earth to inherit, and I hope that you can carry that message forward and make real change. It's going to take very substantial and real change. So um, thank you for the message. I think it's great and a good job.
Great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Very topical. Uh, again, we're three for three on these messages. It's stuff that we all care about and stuff we need to hear. So thank you. All right, Ms. Patterson, group number four.
So at this time, uh, we're going to hear from our senior liaison, Maro Solis Rodriguez.
Hi, hello. Good afternoon, everyone. We just thought we'd change it up a little bit. So again, like Ms. Rhonda said, my name is Maro Solis Rodriguez. I'm one of the one of three uh, liaisons within the program. So it's me, uh, Crystal Mejia and Yulissa Kala. We're all social workers or so, we're all social workers or social workers in training. Uh, we do a little bit of case management, but we also facilitate and host of our afternoon workshops where we go over topics such as like our our park planning workshop series, which they provided input to like the the Yipsey Master Plan update that's currently going on. We did mental health and mental wellness workshops, social justice workshops and advocacy workshops. So we incorporated a sprinkled a little bit about all the different, oh, the lights went off. A a little bit of of different, a plethora of topics that that youth um, found to be very enjoyable. Um, second part of this is that we would also like to, we had our uh, drive-through graduation yesterday and some of the little packets had a special diploma for some students. So we would just like to publicly uh, celebrate the achievements of the following students that they basically got perfect attendance. So what that means is that they attended every single instructional time. So from eight forty-five to twelve o'clock, they were in uh, their class session. And they also attended every single workshop in the afternoon um, without having to um, without being late. They were on time, they were engaged throughout the whole time. So the following students, they 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 obtained this uh, perfect attendance essentially. Uh, the first student is uh, Flor Molina, Itzel Castillo, Jennifer Chan, Mayani Bowens, Michelle Erickson, Shan Santos, Simran Gill, Steve Navarro, Terry O, and Tiffany He. So we just wanted to publicly um, list out, because it's a huge achievement, basically from eight o'clock in the morning all the way to like three thirty in the afternoon, they were somehow engaged within the Summer at City Hall program. So it's a huge accomplishment to have been able to, you know, always be present. Um, thank you for for allowing me to intermission and, you know, acknowledge these students publicly. So without further ado, I'd like to-
Actually, if I could, if I could take just a minute and ask um, Mr. Washington, Ms. Bump, and uh, Ms. Weatherson to just introduce themselves so we can see the teachers. And uh, I know some of, two of them have been with us for quite a while here. But um, if you guys could introduce yourselves and what school you work at, that would be, and how many years you've been doing this, that'd be great.
Go ahead. My name is uh, Mike Washington and I teach at Harum Johnson High School. And this is my sixth year doing uh, Summer at City City Hall.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Bump. I teach science at Harum Johnson also, and this also happens to be my sixth year.
My name is Jamie Weatherson and I am a special education teacher at Sutter Middle School. And this is my first year um, teaching Summer at City Hall. And it's actually my first year teaching, I'm in Sacramento, I'm newly, a new resident. I moved here right in the middle of the pandemic in last summer. So I'm really excited to be involved in this program. It was amazing.
Great, well, welcome. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and with further ado, I'd like to introduce uh, the next group, the uh, Jared Generic Drama Ramas.
Hello, everyone. I'm Grace Hedgeland. I go to John F. Kennedy High School and I currently reside in District Four.
Hello, my name is Sol Baragun Castillo. I am a resident of District Six and I am a student at Harum Johnson High School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ling Hui and I attended the Harum Johnson High School and I am currently a resident of District Five.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michelle Erickson. I currently attend John F. Kennedy High School and I'm a resident of District Seven.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sanche Phok. I'm a resident of District Five and I currently attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Hi, my name is Shan Santos. I go to Lur Beran High School and I reside District Eight.
Hello, my name is Zia Nisha. I am a resident in the District and I'm a student at Hugash High School. Unfortunately, my work team is committed and her name's Erica Tovar. She attends Christian Brother High School and resides in District Three.
Once again, my name is Michelle Erickson of the Generic Drama Ramas, also known as GDR. Good morning, City Council, City Attorney, City Clerk, City Manager, and Mayor Steinberg. Thank you for your willingness to listen to our Project City Hall. I will now pass it back to Zia to begin our presentation.
Our topic is increasing youth input.
So Zia.
For the Parks Master Plan.
I don't know.
Plan is a guide to what-
Zia, we're so, we're having a little trouble understanding you. I don't know if you want to turn your video off? And maybe that'll get a clearer audio.
Okay. Can you guys hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Our topic is increasing youth input in the twenty forty Parks Master Plan. The Master Plan is a guide to what our communities need in their parks. The plan will provide equitable and accessible parks and recreation opportunities to all ages. The Master Plan will identify what programs and services are needed and should be expanded on by the city. It will also improve and recommend policies to guide the condition, protection, and maintenance of our parks. Most importantly, the Parks Master Plan will support and empower the youth in our communities. The plan will offer many facilities and fields and parks to encourage and support youth health, fitness, and fun. That will lead to the development and enrichment of our children, youth, and adults being prioritized. I'll now pass it on to Itzel.
As our team first began our research on the Parks Master Plan, we didn't know how to engage the diverse range of youth. We want to focus on building awareness of the Parks Master Plan. And we considered that the sources already available, such as the survey and the people who are directly involved, are all resources that you should use to become engaged. We all understand the necessity of participating in Mark in the Parks Master Plan. And that now that we concluded our research, we encourage youth and anyone else who gathers at local parks to be involved in bringing about the improvements you would want to see in the future. I'll now pass it on to Michelle.
Keeping the concerns and needs of youth in mind, we have formulated a few requests for City Council to increase youth input in the twenty forty Parks Master Plan. First, we want you to better explain the Parks Master Plan to more youth. The only example of a previous Parks Master Plan is from two thousand and five to two thousand and ten. But that document is over three hundred pages long, way too lengthy for most youths to even just skim over. We also want you to publicize the survey as most of us were not even aware of it until we were given our topic for this project. We recommend that City Council works with Yipsey and possibly the Youth Commission to spread the word of the survey through social media, billboards, PSAs, et cetera. Some of us took the survey ourselves and thought that the sections with the maps are somewhat confusing as some youth may not know the exact locations of where they live or where their nearby parks are. We recommend that the survey be simplified to only text questions instead of having a combination of text and map questions in order to make it easier for youth to understand. Thank you for listening to our presentation, recommendations, and concerns. We will now play our PSA.
Are you a young person living in Sacramento?
Yeah, but there's nothing cool to do around here.
Are you tired of parks that don't meet your needs as a young person?
Yeah, the parks around here are so boring.
Do you feel like adults don't listen to your concern?
They never seem to care.
We wanted to know what the youth cared about most, so we decided to interview some young people ourselves.
Hi, I'm Bao Tao. I'm seventeen years old and I live in Council District Five.
Hello, my name is Zima Niche. I am seventeen years old and I live in Council District One.
Why are you unhappy with the current parks of Sacramento?
People are not-
People are not doing their best to improve the parks. This includes better sanitation in the bathrooms, picking up trash, and just basically creating a safe environment for everybody else in the community.
The parks around Sacramento needs improvement based on the lack of accessible playground equipment, safe communal grounds, and lack of entertainment space.
Those are all very valid points, your next question-
Well, isn't there anything being done about this?
Introducing the 2040 Parks Master Plan, exclusively found on cityofsacramento.org. The Parks Master Plan is a guide that helps the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment, also known as Yipsey, in identifying and fulfilling the community's priorities for services over the next twenty years. But that's enough for me, let's hear from Brianna Mollant, Parks Master Plan Outreach Lead and Associate Planner with Yipsey, to get an inside scoop on what the Parks Master Plan is really all about.
It's important to get as much youth input as possible, so that we're able to determine what the youth in Sacramento need from the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment. Youth are able to share which recreation programs they like or don't like, and which programs they think should be added. They can tell us which are the best parks, and which ones need some help. This is their opportunity to participate in civic engagement, and have a say in what they want their community to look like.
That's right, Brianna, we also strongly agree that youth input is essential for creating the best parks possible, which is why we also reached out to a member of the Sacramento Youth Commission, a governmental body who represents and addresses youth voices and concerns.
Hey, everyone, my name is Michelle Erickson, and I represent Council District Seven on the Sacramento Youth Commission.
Why do you think that youth input is so important into the 2040 Parks Master Plan?
Great question, it is my job as a youth commissioner to give voices to young people in a platform from which they can be heard. When youth lack a voice, they can feel hopeless and become complacent in their adult lives, but we can change that. Youth are also one of the main focus demographics of parks in general, so we should have a say in what happens with them.
But how do we reach out to the youth for more input on parks? Well, for- Man, I wish I could see someone with actual power talking about this. Hey, who's that over there?
Um, the Sacramento Youth Commission has power, and so do you.
Now back to the news.
Limited time only, you can have a say in the future communities of your parks. Yes, you heard that right, you can be the youth voice in your community.
Really?
Really? Yes.
Hmm, why should we do that?
By participating in this survey, you will be able to influence the 2040 Parks Master Plan. Once completed, you can start having fun again.
Yay!
But, we need your help to make this happen, by reaching out to your council members by email, making public comments at city council meetings, reaching out to the Youth Commission, they will be able to listen to youth input and concerns while making the changes best fit to youth communities. That's it for today's Generic Drama Rama news, see you next time.
Thank you for watching our PSA, we will now be showing our billboard. Alright, so this is our billboard, we decided on the slogan Clean and Safe Parks for Happiness, because we really wanted to emphasize the positive impacts that healthy and safe parks can have on their local communities. And the QR code is a QR code to the existing Parks Master Plan survey. We really wanted to utilize the survey, because we know that the city staff has worked so hard on it, and we know that it's super accessible and easy to promote to youth. The main goal of our group is to make sure that we get as much youth input as possible on the Parks Master Plan. So we just thought that the best way to do that was through the survey. Thank you so much for watching our entire presentation, I will now open it up to any questions, comments, and concerns.
Great, Mr. Harris or Ms. Vang, I'm not sure who rang in first.
I'll go first, I'll just jump right in. Um, great job, everyone, I just want to upload, I love how y'all made it, made your PSA super engaging with the drama convos going back and forth in the video, I think it definitely kept me engaged with the PSA, so I want to give a shout out to all of y'all for that. And then also, I really love, love, love the RFQ code, and District Eight, we're doing that for a lot of our materials now, moving forward at community events, right, because sometimes some people don't, some people want brochures, but also other folks have cell phones, young people have cell phones, right? And so RFQ code is the way to go, I don't think we have that on all of our city materials, but I think that's something that our office will be utilizing moving forward, and would, I think the whole city should start doing that. It also saves space on paper as well. Um, and then, yeah, overall, just really great job, Grace, Li Huan, Michelle, Sancha, Shan, and Zia, all of you, just great job overall. And, yeah, just really, really proud of the, the presentation, so great job.
Councilmember. Yeah, thanks, Jay, this time I wasn't on mute. Hey, you know what, watching your PSA was really fun, and what a great way to get a message across. It was very engaging, it was super enjoyable, so great job. Councilmember Gera.
Thanks, again, great job, but I think one of the things I really enjoyed is you engaged your youth commissioner, and showed how you could use different tools to get your voice out. Our youth commissioners have been so active on air quality, on issues of human trafficking, on issues of public safety and transportation, and, and being able to link the dots of the work that you're doing with your youth commissioners, your, your appointed leaders, that was a great connection, so kudos to you all on that.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, sir, Vice Mayor, thank you very much, just want to give a shout out to you guys, you did a great job, I, I really do believe the simplifying the survey is something that needs to be done, and you guys kind of made mention to that, and I appreciate that. And also explaining the master plan to more youth, so they can understand how important it is that their voice be heard once they understand the master plan, so those are really, really good points that you brought out. Loved your PSA, and Zia, the reporter. I, I actually, she did such a great job, I, I saw her on Channel Three, I could see her on Channel Three. Like, I could see that as a future job for her, so she really did a great job, had good presence, really presented herself well. That was very impressive in utilizing that, and I too support the QR code, the use of the QR code as well as getting to the commissioners, our, our youth commissioner, and they happen to be the one in District Seven, so I know Commissioner Erickson very well, and she's a, a great commissioner for people to be able to contact and get information from, so again, just overall, great job, really proud of you, keep doing what you're doing, the future is bright.
Yeah, great, I just echo that, great job, really engaging from start to finish. So we were with it, you were like, what's gonna happen next here? So, really terrific, thank you, and congratulations on it. Alright, Ms Patterson.
And next, we will have Team Zen.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Akshar Smetha, and I attend Atoma Specific Pathways Prep High School, and I reside in District One.
Good evening, my name is Ashlyn Bracamonte, I attend Atomas High School, and I reside in District Three.
Good evening, my name is Geneva Tovar, I attend Christian Brothers High School, and I reside in District Three.
Hi, my name is Isabella Aranda, I attend John F. Kennedy High School, and I reside in District Seven.
Hi, I'm Kati Shemran, I attend Newcom High School, and I reside in District One.
Hi, my name is Lucas Sager Davila, I attend Laguna Creek High School, and I reside in District Five.
Hello, my name is Selena Madrigal, I attend to Hiram Johnson High School, and I reside in District Six.
I attend Luther Burbank High School, and I reside in District Six.
Hello, I'm Xavier Ariaga, I attend John F. Kennedy High School, and I reside in District Five.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. We are here to talk about the lack of awareness among citizens in Sacramento regarding the issues surrounding the wildlife residing in public parks and spaces. Proper care and knowledge on how to treat the wildlife is hard to find online, and there isn't much publicity surrounding the issue specifically in our community.
Out of the seventy-one people surveyed from various parts of the Sacramento area, only three point two percent are aware of animal kindness and the well-being through city advertising. The majority was found only to be familiar with this topic through personal research and media sources. We also found that fifty-four percent of citizens do not know what to do when they see an animal alone, regardless whether it's injured or not. A concerning statistic we found was that sixteen point seven percent of people have witnessed an animal being mistreated, with an added thirty-eight point nine percent unsure how to identify mistreatment among the wildlife. At first, the results may seem low, but because of the large number of people unsure of what counts as animal mistreatment, we cannot help but question how much we have been overlooking animal kindness. Lastly, only seven percent of people, seven percent believe that the city has done an adequate job of advertising and care for animals in Sacramento.
In contrast, an overwhelming sixty-one percent felt that the city of Sacramento could do more for the cause, with the remaining one-third feeling as not enough has been done overall. Thank you, and we will now present our PSA.
Animal kindness is fundamental to the community of Sacramento. Not many people realize that animals in parks and the wild are becoming endangered or unsafe. Students against animal cruelty want to inform the community of our animal kindness campaign to promote wildlife conservation and animal awareness, hence our slogan, Speak for Those With No Voice.
Ryan Hinderman, the Communication Manager for the Animal Shelter of the City of Sacramento, explains steps he thought were important when dealing with wildlife in Sacramento.
And each animal sort of in, in the wildlife in our area is, also has their own needs, so there's things you should and shouldn't do when it comes to each species, so for most of them, for example, you, you shouldn't feed them, because that's gonna, you know, if the raccoons are cute and you feed them, guess what, they're gonna keep hanging around. And so, yeah, it's just, it's, it's really figuring out how can we strike that balance between the unique types of animals that live in our area, so that they can continue to live their lives, but that they're not posing a danger to us, and that we're not throwing off their natural behaviors by giving them food sources or whatever it might be, or, you know, putting out, you know, say you have, you know, you put out poison for rats or something like that, you have to be aware, are there other animals in this area that might be getting into that that you don't want to be, you know, poisoned or whatever, so it definitely, definitely takes educating yourself and, and sort of doing the right things to make sure we're, we're existing peacefully together.
It's important to let the community know what they could do to help, including tips on how to coexist and familiarize ourselves with wildlife, how to properly clean up after ourselves to keep the animals safe, and the importance of following the rules of the park.
Many citizens of our city lack the correct knowledge when it comes to animal awareness. In a survey we conducted with the spread in the city of Sacramento, out of the seventy-one people that participated, only three point two percent of people were aware of animal kindness through city advertising.
Fifty-four percent of people don't know what to do when they see an animal alone. Because citizens in Sacramento are not exposed enough to knowledge about wildlife, our proposition will allow more people to be aware of the issue of animal cruelty.
All of us need to love, to thrive, including nature, and time is running out to take action. As a community, we need to step up and help join the cause, speak for those with no voice.
We will now present our billboard. On the screen is our billboard, once again, our slogan, Speak for Those With No Voice, is imperative to bring awareness on the wildlife in our city. It serves as a reminder that the wildlife do not have a voice, therefore it's up to us to ensure their safety and balance among us. The phone number listed above is the Animal Cruelty Hotline, which anyone can call in case of incidents with an animal.
The rationality behind this recommendation for further advertise- further advertising in the city is within the city's best interest, not only because of how cost-effective it is, but also how it would greatly benefit our environment and the wildlife within it. Our proposed idea will allow more people to become more aware, not simply of the issues regarding the situation, but include ways on how to treat the wildlife in Sacramento properly.
With more citizens of all age ranges gaining environmental knowledge and becoming more aware of the underlying problems about wildlife, it could lead to a more sustainable, safe, and environmentally friendly community for all inhabitants of Sacramento. Thank you, and are there any questions?
Great, thank you very much, let's go to Pro Tem Ashby.
Thank you, Councilmember, I just wanted to say, great job. This is actually really important in our district, some of my colleagues know, we actually even had a mountain lion once in our, in District One, we routinely have rabbits and quails and coyotes and all kinds of wild animals, and we do, our office does get a lot of calls from people who want to know what can they do to help them or save them, and so I'm really glad you guys did this. Akshat, great job, really proud of you, as always, wonderful leadership, good job, great, great work.
Okay, again, Councilmembers Vang and Harris, you rang up at the same time, so you decide who goes first.
Councilmember, I, I'll go first. Um, so, Team Zen, great job, I know this is an awesome topic, and I think even as elected officials, oftentimes we focus so much on human issues, right, or, and then I think we sometimes forget about our animals, even though I am a dog mom. But I think this topic is incredibly really important, because as you all said, we are co-living among, among creatures and among animals, and I think, when I think of our cities, there are challenges for wildlife, right? You know, I think about the noise, the pollution, and all of that, right? As I was listening to your presentation, I was just thinking, wow, Councilmember Vang, have you been thinking about the animals in the city? And I will be honest, I don't think I have, because I've been so focused, and I just want to say thank you for bringing this topic to light and bringing it front and center, because I think it's something that, I think as council, we don't talk about as much, but it's so critical. Because there are many reasons why urban biodiversity is so important, and why it matters. In, in terms of why it matters even for humans, right? And so, just want to say thank you so much for bringing light to this issue, and just a great, just great job overall.
Hey, Councilmember Harris. You know, wildlife diversity and encounters between people and wildlife really occurs a lot in District Three, because we have the American River Parkway that bisects the district. So these are issues that come up frequently, I, I really appreciate you bringing up the topic. And I'd like to say that I think your billboard was really the strong point of your presentation. It's, uh, it's really good, and I think it was my favorite of the presentations so far, so, great job. Hey, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, I just want to echo what my colleagues say, we have a lot of urban wildlife in District Four, from raccoons to skunks, to opossums, but also even at our parks, you know, William Land Park, we've got these ponds that have wildlife in it, and we've had to post no fishing signs, because wildlife is getting injured from people leaving behind lines and hooks, and, you know, you've got ducks there that get tangled in them, and just a lot of unfortunate things, and so I think the more aware we can be of people of the animals around us, not just the dogs and the cats, I'm also a dog mom, I'm rescue dog mom, but all the other animals that depend, from bird feeders to things that we do, how do we keep them healthy and safe? Something that seems just fun, a fun project for us has real consequences for the animals that will use them, and we want to make sure that we're being thoughtful, so really appreciate again your attention to a very important topic.
And, and I just want to agree with Councilmember Vang, and thank you for bringing an issue to us that we really don't talk about very much, or not at all. So I'm sure it will be popping up on an agenda anytime soon, no? So thank you very much, let's go to our next group.
Our final presentation for the evening will be the Gold Diggers.
Hello, everybody, my name is Teya Mack, I reside in District Two, and I attend Sacramento Charter High School.
Hello, everyone, my name is Lena Susu, I reside in District Two, and I attend NP Three High School.
Hello, everyone, my name is Maywin, I reside in District Six, and I attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Hello, my name is Galvin, I reside in District Eight, and I attend Luther Burbank High School.
Hello, my name is Uche George, I reside in District One, and I attend Del Campo High School.
Hello, my name is Emma Bailey, I reside in District Five, and I attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Good evening, City Council members, City Clerk, City Manager, and Mayor Steinberg, we are the Gold Diggers. Our, our group's topic is human trafficking awareness. After conducting extensive research, we have found just how profound this issue really is in Sacramento. We would like to show a video that shows just how pressing this problem is of true human trafficking is. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to today's report. Today, our story is Silent Isn't Golden and Human Trafficking, which describes a guide to bring, to bring awareness to the human trafficking problem in Sacramento.
Sacramento County continues to be one of the biggest hubs for human trafficking, yet youth Sac are none the wiser. Yes, you heard that right, folks. Despite human trafficking being a big problem in California, an exclusive one in Sac, the children continue to be not informed of these dangers. Along the story with May.
Thank you, Taya. We have conducted a local survey to understand the awareness of this issue among students in Sacramento. Most of these students are in middle school and high school, with their age groups being those who are most susceptible to human trafficking. From our survey, we have found that while many students know of human trafficking, not so many are aware that this is a major problem in Sacramento, nor are they aware of any resources for human trafficking. I'll pass it on to Elena for more information.
Here's something an anonymous participant of our survey had to say. Thanks for letting me know about the human trafficking hotspots. I've known for a while that Sacramento has a human trafficking issue, but I've never been super familiar with it or knew how bad it is. And I'll be sure to do some research about the signs that someone may be in trafficking or in danger of it. It's always good to have more information on these kinds of things. And another participant of our survey stated, my family personally has been affected by that, so I think it is a big thing to promote so others are not affected by it.
Due to this lack of awareness, when asked what human trafficking looks like, students showed that there are numerous misconceptions. Some misconceptions are that human trafficking is kidnapping and forced sex trade. That is not always the case. Many can fall into the trafficking system due to a desperation for shelter, food, or safety, a trend that is very high with LGBT youth that have been kicked out or abandoned. Others can be groomed and pushed into believing that they aren't exploited when they really are. Human trafficking is also a racial equity issue. People of color are disproportionately affected by human trafficking. Forty percent of those affected by human trafficking are African Americans and twenty-four percent are Latinx. Additionally, those in poverty or in foster care are more likely to be trafficked. This can happen to anyone, and yet the youth of Sacramento are fully aware of it.
This is why we request that human trafficking awareness posters are provided in local businesses. We request that the city would implement a citywide human trafficking awareness campaign, which would include city-funded posters, our PSA, our billboard, and the spread of community resources that promotes human trafficking awareness and support. This could help Sacramento you, Sacramento youth understand how big of a problem it is and help them stay safe and enlightened as well.
The youth of Sacramento should know about human trafficking in order to protect themselves and each other. They should know where hotspots are, what resources there are to support trafficked peers, and how to identify those who may have been trafficked. Our team was able to interview a survivor from the CSEC organization about how we're able to identify victims of human trafficking. She stated, they tend to often have a change of appearance, tattoos, expensive items, and substance usage. Human trafficking is a huge problem in our community. Despite all our efforts, without more awareness among youth, they will continue to be in danger of falling into the system themselves. Now, as you saw on our PSA, human trafficking can affect anybody, but there are some groups that are more at risk for human trafficking, such as LGBTQ youth, foster youth, homeless, immigrants, individuals with a history of domestic violence, those from a low socioeconomic background, and PIPOC, Black Indigenous and People of Color. Sacramento is a primary hub for human trafficking, trafficking in California, and we need to continue to, to fight and end human trafficking.
So there are many misconceptions about what human trafficking looks like. And to support this conclusion, we conducted a survey with youth whose age group is the most susceptible to human trafficking. With this survey, we found that many people believed that human trafficking was kidnapping or forced sex trade, which is not always the case. Meanwhile, uh, others didn't know that human trafficking was a huge problem in Sacramento.
Statistics show that around eighty percent of the participants from the survey were not fully aware of how big of an issue it is in Sacramento. We need to spend more awareness to combat misconceptions and end human trafficking. We request a policy that requires local businesses to have awareness posters that include educational resources and resources for those affected by it. As we are aware that there are already federal and state laws that require some businesses to implement awareness posters, but we propose that it should be expanded to all businesses.
Further implementing this method of preventative education and providing resources to those affected by human trafficking, more people will become aware of this issue. It is also important for youth to know the resources so they can not only protect themselves and others around them, but be safe and be able to identify the signs of human trafficking. We request that the city funding and resources should be allocated for the implementation of a citywide human trafficking awareness campaign.
As you saw earlier in our PSA, the awareness campaign would include our billboard, our PSA, posters, and the spread community resources that promote human trafficking awareness. We request the council's assistance in bridging a conversation with the Sacramento County Board of Education to assist in integrating this awareness campaign to all schools in the Sacramento County. This would allow the city to also make a greater impact with an awareness campaign because school districts would then be able to use those resources funded by the city to reach the youth in a way the city might not be able to.
It is vital to create an awareness campaign, bring awareness to resources for those affected by human trafficking, bring awareness to indicators and signs of trafficking, and create ways to prevent or intervene in human trafficking. The awareness campaign implemented citywide with our billboard, our PSA, and the city-funded awareness posters, and the collaborative effort made between the city and the Sacramento County Office of Education are ways we can prevent human trafficking and promote awareness of this issue and resources. Now we would like to show our proposed billboard.
As you can see, there's a lot of blue around the billboard and we have a blue ribbon because blue is the color that, uh, represents human trafficking. On the bottom, we have a national human trafficking hotline, which redirects you to city resources for human trafficking. And on the right, we have a diverse group of people, which is supposed to show that anyone can be a hu- uh, a victim of human trafficking. It doesn't matter your race, your sexuality, your gender, anyone can be a victim. And it's important that we pay equal attention to each and every single group.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to our presentation. We will now accept any questions, comments, or concerns.
Great, thank you very much. Did really well on a very serious topic. Um, and I just want to let you know that you've got a member of the County Board of Education who's been listening to you through this whole thing. So we'll hook you up on that. Uh, we're going to start with Councilmember Guerra, who's done a lot of work on this issue and, uh, doesn't surprise me that he wants to be first. But thank you, Vice Mayor. And, uh, and you know, the, the, I, I applaud you for bringing this issue up. And I do want to commend that it was actually our, our youth commissioners, uh, who helped in, um, in organizing and drafting the human trafficking ordinance that my office put together and the city council approved this year. And the fact that you brought up that it takes everyone to, uh, to make a real, uh, impact on this, that e- no one can be silent, that the community can't be silent. I, I also appreciate the fact that you guys took the time to understand what is in current law and that, yes, there are some businesses that are required to have these posters, but that, that it's not, that not every business and not every entity. And so the, the proliferation of making sure that people are aware of it is so critical. Uh, because sometimes we pigeonhole human trafficking as some smaller issue that's somewhere else and not here. I, that, I think you guys hit the nail right on, uh, the, the, on the head there. And to say that it's your engagement as everyone in the community, and that can happen to anybody who can fall into this is critical. Most importantly, I'm glad that you also put out the hotline number out there because even when we do talk about human trafficking, the question is, what do you do about it and how do you engage it? So the two-pronged approach of getting a number out there, kudos to you to making sure that becomes public. And second, starting early with getting schools to make this as part of their conversation at a very young age so that people can be engaged. I just, I want to applaud you for your work, work. And again, I go, it goes to show that it's been our youth who have brought this up. I know our commissioner, uh, from District Six and who also entered with Councilmember Vice Mayor Shenir, Hannah Yi, um, you know, would tell us the stories that she would see on Stockton Boulevard of human trafficking and, and what she saw for many victims at a very young age. Uh, and now she's, uh, you know, a leader in her own right and in college, but started off as a commissioner and a, and an intern here in Sacramento. So kudos again to this group. I appreciate all your work and, uh, keep at it.
Great. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. And yeah, just to echo my colleague, Councilmember Guerra's comments, major props to you for tackling a really tough challenge. Um, another element that I think is lost is just the power of youth, talking to other youth. Um, and I just, um, I get chills and a little emotional thinking about the fact that even the, that you started this conversation over a survey, like you may have already saved some of your peers, um, from falling victim to this, um, without realizing it. And so I just wanted to recognize that, um, that it's so powerful when peers talk to peers and, and the conversations that you started are so brave and having your voice in that PSA is so important because some of your peers are just going to listen to you differently than they would listen to us. And maybe they're going to be a little bit more aware already just based off of what you've done. And that just is, is really incredible. And so I just want to thank you and recognize that, um, and look forward to continuing on these next steps you've outlined for us.
Hey, thank you. Pro Tem Ashby.
So let me just, Councilmember Valenzuela's word choice is perfect. Brave. It's a brave topic. Everybody's presentations tonight were, were great, but, uh, this is a really brave topic for young people to choose. Many of us have worked on this issue in a variety of ways, and I'm just going to be very real with you, young ladies. Until about six months ago, when Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang joined this council, I served for six years as the only female here. And it, it's a challenge. It's a challenge to get resources spent on these types of topics. It's a challenge to keep them at the top of the heap. I stood by myself at a podium once and declared, um, our city to be taking on human sex trafficking. And my partners in those efforts often came from other agencies where women had been elected, whether it was the DA's office or the county supervisors, or maybe even our congresswoman. And I think sometimes this is why we, we skip over where gender parity is really important. And, and this is one of those spots. One of my best friends runs a program in Oak Park that deals almost exclusively with human sex trafficking. And she would tell you how sad it is to walk into a fourth grade classroom and just ask the kids to close their eyes and raise their hands if they've had any experience with this. It's a, it's a very high number throughout that region. And we have to concentrate a lot more energy and effort onto it. I love your billboard. The slogan that silence is not golden, boy, I don't know if that was a team effort or if one of you came up with that. If one of you came up with it, then that person or two of you or three of you needs to go into marketing. This sounds brilliant. Really proud of you. And I love your logo. The fact that you were trying, you made an intentional move to be inclusive, to try to show women of different ages and all different nationalities and sizes and shapes because this isn't exclusive. And, uh, I'm just really proud of you for taking it on. Great, great job.
Hey, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I think I too also want to echo, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, Councilmember Guerra, uh, Councilwoman Valenzuela, um, just really about being brave and centering such an important topic. Um, and most importantly, really sharing the misconception too, right? When we talk about human trafficking, I think that was incredibly powerful. Um, the, the image that you had on your, um, your, your billboard as well, right? You also talked about how, uh, human trafficking disproportionately impacts LGBT and immigrant and communities of color. Um, and I think that's super powerful. But I think one thing that Councilmember, uh, Councilwoman Valenzuela mentioned was a peer-to-peer is what I also wanted to mention, is that just how powerful that is to hear from another young person, um, really just the resources and what's available. Um, so I just want to commend all of you, um, for, for centering this very important topic. Um, and really looking forward to continuing, uh, the work, uh, and watching you all, uh, continue this work, right? And being advocates, not just in this moment, but as you move forward. Um, so just really proud. So great job, everyone.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. Um, just a couple of words, uh, to all of the young people who presented tonight. Just did a wonderful job. And I know I speak for all of my colleagues on the council that we feel very secure in a new generation of leadership coming in. What you've demonstrated, uh, tonight is you've been thoughtful, you've done your research, you've, you've used data, you've been creative, um, and I don't think we could expect anything more. So I, I just want to say thank you to each young person and, and hoping that they will continue to work with this community, for our community, and lead our community as we really tackle these very, very difficult and challenging problems. Uh, and with that, I also want to thank Ms. Patterson. Uh, welcome to the program. Great job. Um, and Chris and, and all of the staff at YFC that participated in that. This is much, much appreciated and really, um, points to the North Star, our North Star is the city. What do we want to accomplish? And becoming a youth-friendly city, uh, means that we engage with our young people. We listen to our young people and then act on it. One question I do have is we talked, uh, I don't know if it was last year or the year before about of these billboards as you switched to that and getting some time on our electronic billboards for the city. And I'm not sure where we are with that. These, these billboards that we've seen tonight are just incredibly professional and, and deserve to be seen by many in this community.
So glad you asked that question because we are working on getting, um, these up. We're going to be doing a social media campaign to highlight the work of summer at Virtual City Hall, um, in our social media area, but we're also going to be looking at getting them up beyond just the PSA time that we have in partnership with, um, our billboards, but looking at doing some paid time for us to be able to get them up during, um, more high-traffic time of day. Um, so we can make sure that we are getting these seen because these students have worked tremendous, you know, tremendously hard on all of these topic areas. And I'm so excited to hear the feedback that you guys are providing. Um, and I think that this is just the beginning of where some of these subject areas can go, and they are intricate issues that we're dealing with within the city. And engaging our young people within these conversations is really a huge goal of what we want to do within our Summer at City Hall program and our civic engagement unit. So I want to commend, um, everybody on the work that they have done. If I can, I would like to have Maria Vides Madal. She has a few comments to make in regards to, you touched on our returning youth who are alumni members that graduated last year. So we want to do an acknowledgement to them before we close out tonight, if that's okay, Vice Mayor?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am Maria Vides Madal, and I am the program coordinator for the Summer at Virtual City Hall program. I would like to take this moment to acknowledge the commitment and dedication that 2021 Summer at Virtual City Hall Returning Youth known as the Bubble Gappys have made to the operations of the program. The high level of leadership and mentoring they have shown since the beginning of February has been really amazing. Uh, teachers, participants, and city staff have had nothing but great things to say about these alumni members from the graduating class of the 2020 Summer at Virtual City Hall Limited Edition Program. These fifteen young people have embraced their roles as leaders, and I look forward to what their future holds. Thank you, Bubble Gappys. I will miss your cheerful faces, but I know that I will see you again leading and guiding our communities to enlighten the future of our city. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight and share our accomplishment. And also, if I can, have, um, Ms. Kim Bump, uh, she, uh, Teacher of the Summer at Virtual City Hall Program, please join us.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, on behalf of the teachers, I just wanted to mention, because during yesterday's drive-through graduation, some of you students received Certificate of Outstanding Achievements. Um, you may have thought, did everybody get this? Was I the only one? Uh, let's clarify that. Um, your teachers nominated you for that certificate. Let me say, all students in this program worked amazingly well and hard, and they were, they were just, they were just such great students. But if you were nominated by your teacher, that meant that you stood out above and beyond. I also would like to mention that, um, through some shuffling of papers, you may have received one of these certificates, but it didn't get in your folder before you actually came through. It will be mailed to you. There were a couple of that were left behind, so if you didn't get one, you actually may be getting one in the mail. Okay? It has been so great to spend all the summer with you, and I'm so happy that you chose to spend half of your summer with us. Thank you. I'd like to now pass it on to Ms. Wimberly.
So as you guys can see, we have some very, very talented young people coming, um, into our communities, and they're there right now. These young people are incoming juniors and seniors, and we actually have some of our returning youth that have graduated. and we actually have some of our returning youth that have graduated and moving on to um, college. But without all of the hard work of this entire team, I want to personally thank Rhonda Patterson, Maria Vides Madal, Mauro Salas Rodriguez, Crystal Mahia, and Yulisa. Oh my goodness, um, I'm sorry, Yulisa, I'm going to mess up your last name. Um, I really want to thank you guys for the work that you guys have done within this program. And we are looking forward to next year. We're hoping to be back face-to-face and getting back into the swing of Summer at City Hall and having sessions and field trips back here at City Hall. So I again, thank everybody for tonight. And if there are any additional questions, um, please feel free to ask.
Thanks, Chris. Really appreciate it. Um, it's a wonderful program. It's actually been copied by, I think, twelve different cities around the state of California. So great to keep it going and improve it and weather the storm of, of COVID and make it through that with your pivot. So thank you. Um, Mayor, uh, thanks for letting me facilitate this part of the meeting. I want to turn it back over to you to, to finish it off.
Thank you. What a great night. Um, thank you, Vice Mayor, for championing this and uh, and, and leading the way. It's uh, inspiring. A lot of, gives us all a lot of hope. Um, let us uh, move now to uh, any public testimony on items not on the agenda, Madam Clerk, and/or council ideas and questions as that is the uh, end of our formal agenda.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no public comment for matters not on the agenda.
Okay. Would help a lot of people who call and praise, praise the presentations and the youth they just got to listen to, but that's okay. Um, members of the City Council, any ideas or questions? I don't see anybody up here. All right?
Vice Mayor, uh, I mean, uh, Councilmember Jennings has his hand up.
I did not see. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I just wanted to, before we left the last subject, I just want to congratulate and thank um, Vice Mayor Shenear for um, all the work that he's done with our kids. Um, I think I heard eleven years um, in this class, ninety graduating students. I can't even tell you how many students have participated in the program in the eleven years since he started this program. Um, and, and the number of school districts that have come on and become partners with us in doing this work is now triple over what we started. Um, and being able to give the young kids a stipend and just having them work together in order to be a part of government. And so I just want to take a moment just to acknowledge Council, Vice Mayor Shenear and the incredible work that he's done with our kids, not only in this, but in everything that he's done and his, his ongoing long-term commitment um, to our kids and to the future of Sacramento. So just want to stop for a second and let him know we really, I know I do and I know we do as well, appreciate him. And uh, I'll, I'll do what, what Councilmember Myvang is doing. I'll give him a round of applause.
You're here.
Thanks, Rick. I appreciate it. We, we can learn a lot from these young people.
Yes, we are.
There we are. All right, members and members of the public and city staff, if there's nothing else to come before the City Council tonight, have a good week. We are adjourned.